You ready?
MAST project.
Yeah, that's the crosswalk, the lights of the crosswalks. We convene the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for today, August 4th. So, what did I say, August?
Gee, that was close, wasn't it?
He wants the sunshine.
Yeah.
November 4th.
November 4th. Stephon will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please, to the right, the United States of America, and to the right, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mark. Make a motion that we approve the regular minutes for October 29th. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion that we approve the non-public meeting for October 29th, Sessions 1, 2, and 3. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
About?
July. No, just those ones here.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, well, there was 1, 2, and 3. He made a motion for the consent agenda, I second it.
Any discussion? We've already gone through it. All in favor? Aye. Public input. Mark!
Hi, Mark. We didn't think you were showing up, we were scared.
Did you get a cushion? Would you like one?
No, I'm good.
Okay. You did get a sign-off for joining CIP, thank you very much.
Well, I was here, glad to be here, so thank you.
Good.
Is that all, that's all straight now, do you have tomorrow?
I think I have it right here. If you'd like to take it to the town for it.
I could do that, I'll do tomorrow, you can agree.
Thanks, Mark.
Tomorrow before the meeting.
Yeah.
Come hold me off here.
Thursday, Thursday.
Today's Tuesday.
Because I would've missed it, I would've missed it. I would've missed it.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay, we'll move on to appointments. Stephon, come on up and talk about MAST. And have you reviewed this with Joe?
I keep him updated.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I tried to make them all bigger. For all parties.
No, no specific party, just all parties?
He's looking at you, that's all I know. Not looking at me.
But it isn't just me.
No, you're right.
There's somebody else that has a bit of a challenge.
You're right. I take it you're gonna walk us through this, right?
Yeah. Okay. So, I color coordinated it slightly. So, towards the left, where you see grant total at the bottom, that is how much we were awarded for this project. If you slide over to the right, the, there are some tentative costs that have not been firmed up. A, because, partially why I'm here is because I recommend that we request a change in scope to the project, partially extending the period of time we have to complete the project, and to also expand upon the number of sets of RRFPs. And you'll see on the right, there's descriptions for everything, the total cost, there's also another $10,000 coming from the rail trail trust fund. And the only portion that I took out was the in-kind match, which is DPW's labor. And then the tentative costs are the, if it happens, the installation of the fourth set of RRFPs, the cost for Eversource to install two lights near the crosswalk on Sawyer's Crossing, and a tentative cost of a contractor installing concrete pads with ADA warning strips on it.
Where are those numbers?
So, they're in yellow. They're all in yellow. It'd be, so according to...
Eversource is $3,500?
Roughly. I mean, I went through...
And that's just for the two lights?
Yeah. But that's, so, it's for two lights and a pole.
Okay.
And that, that was just a rough estimate of me online, looking at rough costs. And I also went through the town's ledger to see if we have paid for a light installation in the past 10 years. There was one that looked like it, but it was for $130. So, I really don't know how much this is gonna cost. I just know it would be somewhere between $2,000 and $5,000, so I just put it in the middle.
And then the pads are $1,500 apiece, in a total of $3,000, am I reading that right, or am I wrong?
A rough estimate.
What did he mean by what's going in the pads?
You know, I don't, it's concrete to hold those warning devices, metal, and we're hoping, because the rail trail's the DOT right away, DOT's saying you have to have them for the Sawyer's Crossing cross. We had communication with the rail trail committee to make sure they're not gonna require it for the Matthews Road crossings, but it's basically to pour a 5x6, 6-inch concrete pad as an approach to the road, and the warning devices, which, a little bit problematic to me, I was hoping the state was gonna waive them, not that they snowmobile a lot anymore, but snowmobile with steel studs is gonna tear the concrete all up and the warning devices, and then the same thing goes with a groomer coming through. But if it's their requirement for their state road, I'm just hoping that the rail trail committee doesn't say we need to do the same thing on the three crossings on Matthews Road, because then you're talking six, six more concrete pads, six more warning devices.
Wow.
So, the pad is 4x6, but the device itself is...
Five, five by six.
Five by six, but the device itself is, what, 2x3 maybe?
No, they go the full width of them, so it'll be 2 probably by 5 feet. They make them all kinds of different sizes, I don't know what the ADA spec, like, we put them on the sidewalk out here on Railroad Street at every road crossing.
For the trail, it would only be half, though.
Yeah.
They said push it to, actually, they said push it to the side closer to the river. So, he said if we wanted to talk to anyone about putting signage up for, like, snowmobiles or anything to avoid those, those pads, that would be Sean Violet of DNCR in coordination with the snowmobile clubs.
So, in terms of the overall project, the three that we originally started with, those are moving forward?
Yes.
And we're, are we wondering, are we just gonna go ahead?
No, I told, I told Stephon I would talk with Sean Violet from the rail trail, because we go ahead and have to do it after the fact, it's gonna be costly, so I'm hoping no, because it's our town road, and the reason why I think he needs them on Sawyer's Crossing is because the DOT road, I'm hoping the rail trail's not gonna say, "Well, you need to put them on your road as well."
And by rail trail, you're talking about state?
Yes, because they have the ultimate say over, the state has the ultimate say over the rail trail, it's their jurisdiction.
From what I read, it sounds like it's DOT's call, though, which is why, the last time I talked to Sean last year, he didn't really have much to say, because I told him I was talking to DOT.
Is that something you could determine tomorrow?
Whenever Sean picks up the phone, I'm gonna call him since.
They don't, states are awful about getting back on stuff on all departments.
So, how do we determine if we move forward with the Matthews Road signals?
I mean, we can definitely move forward with the 3, this is just if we wanna go with the 4, no matter what, I have to put the request in with the MAST steering committee.
Okay, so, for today, you're asking for an amendment to, to adjust the, the amount that we've received to reallocate it, or to allocate the entire proceeds?
And the change in scope for the project.
To, to the end of '26. But the 3 for Matthews Road, you'd go ahead and have those put in this year? Okay.
No, those will not be put in this year.
Why?
The suppliers said they're not doing installations until spring.
How'd we miss that?
Like, how did...
Yeah, how did that, because all year, we've, since this was approved, we, or voted on and supported, we anticipated they were going in this year, but...
That was the plan, but when I reached out to actually place the order, they said that they were pushing everything to spring.
Okay.
We were planning on putting them in in November, but...
Okay. When was the order, when, when did you try to place the order?
Um, I was gonna place it like, 2 months ago, but then we wanted to change the scope. So, then I was trying to get the second pair, or the fourth pair ordered.
Okay. All right, so how, how much in total are we pushing, would we be pushing off to the end of the year of '26 for that fourth signal? Is there any way you could...
Oh, the total added cost is that fourth column to the right, the 2026 addition.
Yep.
It'd be an additional cost of $22,000, roughly.
And, and most of that is coming out of the original allocation?
Uh, no, it would be the $18,000 from the 2021 reallocation, and then anything we fall short of, we have the, the rail trail, the trust.
So, what's the total, what'd you say, $22,000?
$22,130.
So, we'd have 18 left over, and we'd have to raise $4,000 from the rail trail. Capital resources.
Expended from, yeah.
Right, okay. All right.
Unless I find more monies.
Is there, is there a way to tighten up that Eversource number, and so it's not a projection?
Yeah, so, I spoke to Eversource today, they said they have to have a technician come out to look at the pole, to see if they're, if it's good to put a light on that, and then to scope out the, across the street, to put up another pole and light. They said it's free, free of charge, so I'm gonna put a work order in tomorrow.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's $130.
Have any questions? Jim?
No, I think you hit it on the head, we just gotta be concerned with that number there, you know, that he's what, not Farah, you know, personally, I think that's a low number, but we'll see. I don't know.
All set? All right, so what do you need from us? Can you just go through this? The request for, is this just something you're asking us to, to agree to, have you, authorized you to sign it, or is there any, is there any, anything other than a motion to do that?
If you wanna make a motion to approve a change in scope to the project, that is also perfect.
Okay. All right. So, we refer to it as the Menadoc Alliance for Sustainable Transportation Steering Committee, or...
You can, yeah. The project, or who you're addressing it to?
Well, for the motion.
I would address it as the project.
Okay.
The 2024 round of the Menadoc Alliance for Sustainable Transportation Complete Streets Project Implementation.
Okay. All right, did you get all that?
No.
Did you get all that, Sue? Wanna recite it again, so he can just say, "So moved."
I apologize for not typing that out.
Yeah.
Mark makes a motion.
You don't have to say that, just what, what is it that you need?
Oh, permission to apply for a change in scope to the 2024 round of the Menadoc Alliance for Sustainable Transportation Complete Streets Project Award.
That's what you need? And, and authorization to have you sign the request? Okay. We all set, Sue? I don't, he's just gonna say, "So moved." He's already done it.
So moved, we're good.
Jim?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Stephon.
Sean keeps posted.
Please, thanks. Thanks very much.
No, you can take it. To me. Thank you, Stephon. Have a great night.
Joe, do you mind if I hold you off for a minute?
No, go ahead.
All right. Next item on our agenda is Recreation Director Ashley Crosby, Recreation Department, 2026 Budget Proposal. How we doing, Ashley?
Where is it? The fourth one down? Okay. Thank you, Teresa. You did, but Billy messed you up. He loves to throw curveballs in there.
You got it?
No.
Okay. Take this off. 1, 2, 3.
That one? This one, right? Thank you. Okay. Well, walk us through, Ashley. Excuse me, before you start, what, what's the date that these numbers are current?
Everything might have posted through last week.
Okay, so...
Payroll this week.
Okay. Thank you. So, through the end of October, through the end of October for all the items other than payroll?
No, we're still posting October invoices.
But, but everything that's been posted is representing through the end of October?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I'm looking at my end of things, I think everything for October that would go into the main budget has already been posted. One of the biggest changes would just be looking to move that part-time assistant position to a full-time position. I have to constantly police Ashley's hours right now, because we just have so much going on. She could easily be a full-time position, she has only 30 hours a week right now. That was one of the larger increases, and it looks like we've condensed that all down into one line item now, instead of two broken-out line items. It was, she was under that part-time salary range, but now it looks like she's up in that first grouping as well right now. But that mainly is like, my biggest change, everything else, I can...
Teresa, can you, can you take us through that?
The top line, right, we're all on? Okay, yeah, walk us through that.
We are, Ashley's proposing to move her position to full-time, so we get closer to a full-time payroll line instead of a part-time one, which is why it got moved to the closed budget.
So, this year, we had $34,000 approved, and we're asking to bump that to $46,000? Okay.
That would account for a general wage increase for Ashley, like, we normally do our raises and of that sort, and then to increase it 10 hours a week as well.
Okay. And then, some other word, we'd have the additional benefit?
Just normally, insurance budget, the personal administration budget, both of them together.
Okay. All right, sorry.
I'm a little confused, you're gonna have to explain it to me better than this. I thought we were up here in the top line.
Well, we're, we've got, this is the assistant position.
So, should they wanna move this number up to here, is that what we're doing?
Yep, we're bringing it, so the first two, so, so this line is Ashley Crosby for next year. This line is Ashley Nash for next year, and then this is the total. So, it's going upwards.
I see, so this will be eliminated, then, and that will be up there?
Yep.
I see, now it makes sense.
Yep. But in addition, yeah, so, so this is what was budgeted for the position, a part-time position last year, $34,000, and this year, it's, next year, it's being budgeted at full-time at $46,000, so it's a $12,000 increase. So, it looks different when you're looking at the percentages in the right-hand column.
Yeah.
It's, it's because they're balancing out, so it's not really...
Because this one's going negative, I gotta minus this from that.
Right.
Right, because we're going negative on one end and positive on the other.
Yep, yep.
Yes, just wages, not...
Correct.
That's just wages.
Yep.
I did have a slight increase in the IT support and maintenance, that was to reflect the costs that I had seen from our IT support this year, as well as moving the subscription for the cameras that are at Brown onto this line item, and I was also hoping to look to add 2 more cameras down to Richardson Park, similar to the ones that we probably, that we have already over at Brown. Those are in there as well, that's what's leaning towards that increase that you're seeing over what we had last year budgeted for the IT support line.
Okay, before we get to that...
Yep.
Teresa, these telephone charges, are they all rolling up to the $3,300, or are they in addition to the $3,300?
They're rolling up into the $3,300.
Okay, thank you.
I tried to give you as many notes broke down, different things that are going in each line this year. If the, if the word for first, have all the numbers at the end, I can do that, or I can not put them at all, I just think it's more of a rig, how much each line, so you can see what is, maybe not the numbers in the whole budget. A lot of people don't realize that I also pay for the AEDs, which are also cellphone-based, so I look like I have 5 cellphone lines, when they're all made of the AED boxes around town.
No, I think this is fine, Teresa, it's just our first time going through this format, because it's, it's more of a return to, all right, thanks. Okay, so, sorry to get off track there, but, so you're, you're, you were on the IT, and I'm still kinda puzzled how we're figuring IT if we don't have a contractor yet, Lori.
I had just put the number in that reflected last year's amount that was budgeted towards me for the IT support. I don't, I didn't really know how it's to account for it. I knew I was gonna probably get hit with something.
Yep. So, if I'm reading this correctly, we're over budget now?
Yes.
Like, $837, right? And she wants to move it to $4,500, right?
Yep.
From 4, right?
That was because I saw a larger increase in my IT support, it was only budgeted for, I wanna say, about $300 last year, and I saw almost $700 for IT support. I know that played into it, as well as a slight increase for the MyRex subscription that we have, that I did account for, for the 2026 budget.
Okay. So, through October, you were at $4,000?
Yes.
So, I'm rounding off.
Yes, yes.
98.
So, that's $400 a month?
Yes.
So, you'd be adding $800, which would get you roughly to $4,800, and you're budgeting for less than that?
No, so, if you look at the notes of all the breakdowns, it shows what we're looking at for the MyRex, so the MyRex we paid, I have it budgeted at $3,500 this year, last year, we only paid 32. 32, well, oh, pretty much 33.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
I am. The next few show decreases, based on what our current year looked like this year. The electric cost does go down a bit, Brown is not being used as much, and we're not utilizing the lights as much over there, which is saving us substantially, those lights are a large expense.
All right, so you're, you're anticipating that's gonna continue?
Yes.
Why are we using it less?
So, the men's and women's leagues are not using Brown Memorial Field anymore, they're using just the Keene League fields, the leagues are getting smaller. We're looking to bring in a CoEd league that's gonna be there more consistently, but the goal would be to have everything kind of during the day. The nighttime with the current conditions of the lights make it kind of hard, because we do have some dark spots in different areas, just because the light bulbs are from 1975. It makes it harder.
But didn't you, but from numbers, again, didn't you increase, didn't we increase the charges for those fields?
Yes.
Because I heard a lot of, of people saying they won't use Brown's fields because it costs too much now.
So, we are actually cheaper than Keene is still. I only charge them $85 for 4 hours if they're not turning the lights on, and I only charge them $100 if they then turn the lights on, for 4 hours or less, which is usually their entire evening. Because right now at Keene, they pay $1,500 plus $50 every single time they turn the lights on down there. And my big thing is I also need to account for all of the bathroom usage, that directly also impacts outside the lights.
But that definitely did slow down the ball field.
It did, but...
Because I know, I talked to people, and they said that the prices are way too high over there.
I increased it only up $25 from where it was prior to me taking over the field, and it stayed that same for the last 4 years.
Your increase was $25?
Mm-hmm.
Again. And when was that increase made?
2022, I wanna say.
You didn't increase something just recently, in the past 3 years?
It's that...
Interesting.
Oh, I, I get it every single time I go to a softball game, so, yes, it's a hundred...
You get what, excuse me?
The people come in to me wondering why they don't use the fields anymore. A lot of people have come to me sharing that they are concerned that the cost has increased when it really has not reflected that on our end.
Is there anything we can do from a communication standpoint, or with any of the leaders of those groups?
We can, they receive our rental agreement every single year, our rental agreement is available online for the entire public to review and see. We've had organizations rent it outside of just the men's and women's league, I just think our, unfortunately, our softball leagues in this area are kind of dwindling a little bit.
Well, maybe we'll have our Town Hall departmental softball game there, next week. Under the lights.
Yeah! Be careful, last thing you're gonna want is to get in one of those dark spots, have that ball show up real quick.
That's right, wouldn't matter, I wouldn't be able to get it anyway. All right, after the way I played.
But it does show you a breakdown of what, what average right now per month in all the properties that I have a electric bill for, which are 5 different properties, or 5 different electric bills.
Okay, and then the repairs and maintenance?
That has a slight increase, just to make sure, I've increased it to replace a swim area buoy at Richardson Park. The white buoys are the big ones that mark out the swim area, are kind of starting to disintegrate into, are a little, on the older side. My goal is to try to replace one of them a year. With that, I've also looked to replace some of the red buoys that we have around the rope and of that sort. With that as well, I also increased the amount of, like, I have a line for sand to be compliant with the joint loss management, I didn't get sand over to Lane this year, but I was hoping to dump some more sand over there this coming season, if you've ever looked at the playground, the playground gets real low in that. hoping to dump some more sand over there this coming season. If you've ever looked at the playground, the playground gets real low in that area. We want to make sure we're at least up to somewhat compliant with a safety standard with that.
Good idea.
And honestly, I don't know if a handrail to the, the second floor over there is really gonna be three hundred dollars. Those were all just kind of my Google guess estimates.
Well, you gotta tell them to your right who can help you with a lot of those kinds of calculations. Alright.
Professional development did increase a little bit to include Ashley with a New Hampshire Parking Recs associate membership as well, so that it's cheaper for her to attend conferences with me. It also then has in there for her to attend the state annual conference with me as well.
When does that help?
The annual conference for the rec, the statewide one for New Hampshire is in October. We just went on the sixteenth of October. It does have a line item in here as well to hopefully attend the Northern New England Parking Recs Association, which is usually in January. But this would be for twenty-twenty-seven, because we were, we were normally purchasing right now, because most in January is when we normally attend it.
And what's the benefit of attending?
Um, I've enjoyed it. It's a great networking opportunity. You are able to meet different organizations that are there to help support parking recs. Personally, it was a great learning experience the first two years that I went to kind of meet with other directors and kind of get a footing on where, as a small department, we're considered with the state, how other departments are handling, being kind of one person, and how we do this, and how things get done with that. It's also helped me provide some different opportunities and insight on different, um, community opportunities that are around the area that we can also bring to Swansea.
Great. Do you guys have anything? On that page?
No.
The plumbing increase is so we're budgeted to empty the septic tank at Lane and at Richardson Park this year.
Where's that?
That's under the public life garden gate staff wages.
Oh, up top. Right, yeah, right up there. I'm sorry, could you go back over that again?
Yep, um, so the plumbing, normally, that's the only thing that's budgeted in there, is just our brown sewer and water, and then the porta potty at the boat launch. This year, I did include a estimate cost for the septic pumping at Lane and the septic pumping of Richardson Park. Lane hasn't been done since twenty-twenty-two, and Richardson Park, obviously, built was twenty-twenty-three, so the goal would definitely be to get that probably emptied in that this year, or upcoming spring.
You're comfortable with the dumpster numbers?
I am, because we're not going to have a six hundred dollar startup fee this year to have the dumpster placed at Lane like we did this current season. The dumpster's already down there. These numbers that are in there reflect what the general monthly fee is for those two properties.
Okay, so running through that, you're, you're budgeting about a fourteen percent increase year over year?
Yes.
Alright. You guys have any questions? Mark? Jim?
No.
Lori? Alright. We, we may come back and revisit this. It's a fairly substantial increase.
No, I a hundred percent agree.
Yeah, we have to.
Yep. And I, I really feel like that big hit is increasing Ashley.
Okay.
A lot of the other stuff is just kind of to reflect what's already currently happening.
Alright, I think, just on that topic, it would be helpful if you met with the town administrator, reviewed the rationale for increasing to a second full-time person, and what the benefit would be, and and also expanding a little bit more on the conferences and what programs we could bring to Swansea that would engage more children and hopefully adults.
Yep.
Okay. If you could do that before the end of the month, because we'll have you back in December.
Okay.
And then you wanna get into the camp?
Oh, the staff wages?
Yep.
Uh, that's... Okay, I was gonna say, I'm, I was like, uh, I hadn't seen that whole number yet.
So that's almost, again, almost a fifty percent increase?
That also sits in our revolving fund and is offset by the camp registration fees.
I get that, but why about a fifty percent increase?
Um, I really shouldn't, I'm trying to pull up my sheet that I sent Theresa today.
Where do you see that fifty percent now, please?
Going from here to here.
I was gonna say, I don't...
Do you wanna, do you wanna have a chance to review this with Theresa, and then when you come back in December?
We can. I just, I'm, I, other than just general increase in wages for the returning staff, I did not change any of the current positions or increase staffing at all. That's why I'm wondering if this, I, I would love to see what, um, the increase for their wages or the rate increase would be versus this.
Alright, why don't you do that then? Alright.
Yep.
Kind of, that's a pretty big jump, especially when it was difficult to hire people. Anybody else? Mark? Jim?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Good job today.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. DeRusso?
Alright, where am I now? Yeah, and I think I took this off the top. Is this one that's on the top? Is this one?
Yes.
What's that?
Off the lower number, it's the first one to report.
Yep.
I see.
So do you want us to start right at the top at cemeteries? I just need to get to it, Joe. Oh, I got it. I guess, is this, um...
So the top one, this is cemeteries, full-time salary?
Yep.
Four-one-nine-five?
Yep. You got it? You got it?
Did it.
Okay. Yep.
So the cemetery is pretty consistent. There's a little bit of an increase with fertilizer, and then obviously on full-time salaries and part-time salaries, but everything else in there is pretty consistent. You'll look at some of the numbers, and you'll say, oh, you haven't spent that yet for this year. Part of that was because the plan was to pave the roads this year, which we just accomplished this week in, in the Mountain View Cemetery. So those aren't posted yet. We don't even have invoices. We literally just finished it yesterday. So those accounts are gonna take a big hit from that. It was approximately thirty thousand dollars, high, high twenty thousand dollars worth of paving inside Mountain View Cemetery.
So before we get to that, just looking at the full-time salaries, that, that seems like a fairly substantial jump.
It is having to do with raises for, for Angel and Bideo, and then the new, there's a portion of the new truck driver position that is going to go into that account, because they're gonna be seventy percent DPW, thirty percent cemetery. And we budgeted in the past for two part-time cemetery mowing staff. Now we're only using one.
Okay.
So it's mainly the two raises and the one full-timer, and a full-timer?
Thirty percent of his salary. We did seventy percent, thirty percent on the recent truck driver position with the, it, it's a struggle to find part-time help to keep up with the mowing and dependable part-time help. So with the new position we added last year, we decided to fund that partially out of that.
Okay. And the combination is roughly thirty thousand?
Seventy to thirty percent.
No, 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 I meant in terms, but your increase is about thirty thousand, so...
Twenty-nine.
Thousand, yeah. The benefits and everything, yes.
Oh, that's with them?
No, no, this doesn't, this, this is just salary.
Thirty percent of that shouldn't be thirty thousand.
We got it down here.
That's in there.
Isn't that a nice present? You'd love that to Theresa to tell us.
Well, she asked me, and I said, what do you normally do? She said, we would normally do the next. I said, okay.
Okay. So Joe, the the fifty thousand dollar increase, or fifty-six thousand, half of that is payroll. Where else is it coming from?
Yes, then there's slight increases in fertilizer for, for one-nine-five, one-six-fifty for the cemeteries.
Yeah, but that's...
No, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna go down through the list. There's five in it there. There's a three hundred dollar increase for the equipment repairs. It's just the cost of everything going up. Theresa, the eighteen fifty-one on the part-time salaries, is that just a coal increase?
Yep.
And then there's a thousand dollar increase on the other fertilizer line item.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong line. So it's, it's actually just an additional three thousand over payroll, basically?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
But the big number is the payroll.
So that, that particular category shows about a twenty-seven percent increase for this particular area, for the cemeteries?
Correct.
How does that happen? How does that happen? We're, we're right here. Explain that to me. We're at forty-seven here, and we had that at twenty-six.
Yep. And then some of this will be offset by increased revenues? Are, are you working with Lee on that, too?
Yes, we met today actually on it. Gonna present it to the board. He's prepared to consent to the board now.
Okay. And when do you anticipate that would go into effect?
He's got some recommendations. The board's gonna make notification now, say, give it a six-month period before it goes into effect. But that's a board's discretion. You could make notification now, and then you could make it effective January first as well, but he felt that there should be some type of a notification.
Okay. And, and is that gonna come with a comparison with other local communities?
Yes, other local, we went over those today, and it was pretty reasonable.
Okay.
As usual, there's some very, very high and some low. We kind of made it in the middle, so nothing too, too substantial, but, but warranted increases.
Okay. It's been quite a while since there's been an increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, you guys have any questions? Mark? Jim?
Okay.
Okay. Going on? Full-time salaries?
For highway?
Yep. What, what's driving the increase? Wait a minute.
The new, the new truck driving position.
Excellent.
And then the increase, the, the increase, um, wages for the DPW foreman as part of his negotiation when we hired him.
I think if you just pull that, Mark, just pull it. Just pull it.
The new DPW foreman's position is more than it was before because of his skill set, and it's anticipated he'll be getting his grade two sewer operator license, so there's it's part of the hiring and recruitment to him, and he's, he'll be due for a raise when that takes place, and he's taking the test this year. We are assuming he is going to pass. But there is a, we currently have that new position that was added last year. That's the one that's offset seventy percent DPW, thirty percent cemetery.
Right. Okay. So there's a slight, oh, actually, pretty good decrease in part-time?
Yes.
Is, is that because of lack of availability of part-timers?
Yeah, and then just restructuring as far as positions go.
Okay.
But the cemetery was definitely, every time we put out applications for, for positions, the applicant pool was poor at best. And it was, it was the same thing when we advertised for highway department, um, positions, but we've done some recruitment, and it's panned out.
And then in the outside labor, that's come down substantially since last year, but still, do we, do we need that increase for outside labor?
Yes, so I've explained it before, and I let, I let the board know last year this was coming. So we're doing all these road improvement projects, Weber Hill, South Winchester, West Street, now, um, North Winchester Street, California Street. So every spring, you have to vacuum out the drainage system, the closed drainage system, the catch basins, and it's getting more and more expensive to hire an outside truck. But we used to be able to get through in four or five days. Now we're gonna be looking at closer to two, two weeks. That covers street sweeping, the back truck, and it also, it covers rental of equipment needed to do certain projects, which DPW, as you know, is doing more and more projects, which often requires the rental of equipment. There's really no way around that one.
Okay.
That and the paving, which I'll explain in a moment, is the, is the big increase. The paving's really the big increase because of the road project plan, the roads that were scheduled to be paved next year. When we get to that, if you wanna jump to that, next weekend.
Sure. People appreciate paving.
Do, and it's, it's, I know, it's an expensive part of my budget, but it's part of the plan moving forward.
You had a good response to the paving of the cemetery?
Yes, yes. Well, we were paving down there. We had a lot of people stop by the cemetery. It's a lot of visitors, and people were, were applauding us doing the work. That it looked so much better. It did. It came out really nice. And we did it for a fraction of what it would cost having a contract. We hired a contractor to put the asphalt down, but we purchased the asphalt, and we put it down. We hauled it with our trucks. We helped with labor, so something that could have cost up to a hundred and fifty dollars a time, we put in place for probably somewhere around ninety. So very beneficial there. And it's working with the CIP committee. We're gonna be planning on CIP funds for the future, so we can do the rest of the cemetery thirds. There's a section of paved roads in there that need to be redone. Two of them need to be, two or three of them need to be completely removed and started over again. One of them can be shimmed and then overlaid. And then there's another third of gravel roads that, that we would like to see paved in the future, so we can kind of do it in thirds with CIP. But we'd like, just to reiterate that, that was established this year by the money we saved by not hiring a part-time mower this year. That's, a lot of that money is coming from that. So yeah, our normal numbers over the last few years have been three hundred and thirty thousand for asphalt. Last year got cut down to last year had to cut down to three hundred thousand, so, so we weren't able to do crack sealing. We weren't able to do a lot of
So that's why you added the thirty plus hundred?
Yeah. So the four-thirty for this year, it's because of the roads that are, are scheduled to be paved are Fox, uh, Foxglove and Partridge Berry. Those roads are in poor condition. Cedar is on that list, and then the board expressed an interest in having Seminole Lane paved this year because of the carpenter home and the poor condition that road is in. So that, that big increase is because of the roads that are scheduled to be paved this year. And then it includes money for crack sealing and, and road patching, but that is a substantial creep. And that plan was put in place over the, over the last several years as far as what roads needs to be done. And the problem with not doing them is you just kind of, for lack of better terms, kick the can further down the road. It just starts to build up. But those roads are in poor shape.
The new equipment, I mean, we didn't, you don't budget that, not any, we, we would negate this year?
No, no, because most of our purchases are very expensive, so it goes through CIP. There is a line item for tools and equipment and supplies, so the, the smaller tools are purchased through that account.
Let me ask you, one piece of equipment that, that I thought was a concern of the Public Works is, would it come under that about the new pressure washer? We, we do have an old one, and we got the new equipment, and don't you use that to clean the equipment?
We do, and it's still holding on.
How much did you say they go for?
They range from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand.
Is that a CIP item or is it?
Potentially, yes. Or a year where we're able to save money on, say we budget for asphalt. And the cost of asphalt drops over the wintertime, which often does. And sometimes we have a surplus, then sometimes we go to the board, but there's no current plan in place to buy one of those. Ours is still working.
I know, but it's hanging on. And that's a big thing for you guys to wash the trucks. We got new vehicles and get the salt off.
Especially...
I would love to see us try to figure out something for that.
I was able to cut down on gravel a little bit. We're starting to get caught up on the dirt roads, so I lowered gravel budget this year. If I remember correctly, it's five thousand dollars down from what it was.
I think we're going to have to take a hard look, Joe. This is overall a pretty substantial increase that people are going to struggle with.
Yeah, then we better take a hard look at our road plan moving forward because it's all stuff that has been previously made out.
What is the total increase?
About sixteen percent.
For the whole, all of it together?
Yep.
Well, the big hit was the paving. Sixteen point four.
Yeah, sixteen point nine. Pretty close to seventeen, I think. Maybe not as close as I think it is.
Well, the basic ones were the paving and the payrolls. And we needed those guys.
I think we just have to look at it, maybe have a work session or something, and they're all worthwhile projects and emphasis.
We just got to reevaluate on our road projects moving forward.
Yeah.
Like I said, I look at...
So you already have a schedule for next year and the roads what you want to hit, right?
We're budgeted out many years.
Yeah, these roads are actually planned before me, but they need it. They're in bad shape. Yeah, you can plan on roads. About every ten years, you're going to wind up doing something to them. And the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets to repair them.
It might be worthwhile to take a look at that list. See if, because you're right, it's been, this has been planned for years. So it's no surprise, but that's a pretty hefty increase in a budget overall and a couple of line items. Because otherwise you're pretty tight.
Yeah, everything else is pretty close.
Yes, the payroll and the paving.
Like I said, the outside labor, you have no choice. You have to do maintenance items. You have to sweep in the spring. You have to clean the catch basin, especially like I said, with all the...
How much was that?
Nine thousand.
Our closed drain...
Nine thousand dollars.
Over the last five years, our closed drainage systems have increased dramatically from all these roads.
What's the cost of one of them vacuum trucks?
What do they figure? It's like twenty-seven hundred dollars a day, two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour?
No, I meant to buy one. For us to own one.
Couple hundred thousand.
Maybe other towns need that work.
Lease it out, I mean rent it out.
But then comes more, the same thing comes, then comes more staff and more payroll. But yeah, the roads aren't cheap. That's the sort of...
And we had for years just put all this off. At least you're on a good plan.
Yeah, we're on a good plan. Like I said, I fully hear your saying. When I looked at the numbers of what was planned out on those roads and budgeted for it, it's a big increase. But not doing it this year doesn't make it any better next year and then the roads coming forward.
But this plan was made before you even came on the board?
Yeah, I played a little bit of a role in it, but most of it was already in place through Mike Granley and others that have been working on it. But they're the roads. The roads are in really good shape overall in town, but the ones we have coming up that are really bad, Christian Hill, which is being done over CIP, is awful. West Street was falling apart like you almost couldn't plow it. That's getting partially fixed this year. That's getting done in the operating budget. The top coat of it next year is being done by CIP. And then next year, we're going up to Marcy's, up to Sugar Hill, which is falling apart. You can barely pave and barely plow it now when a plow truck goes over it. So that's getting done next year through CIP, not through operating budget. But those roads were selected to be done over the operating budget. Like I can pull it up and I can let you know which ones are coming next here in just a minute. Yeah, like I'm not exaggerating when the plow truck goes over, you see chunks of asphalt in the snowbank. Hold on, I can give you a quick overview. Just pull it up of what the plan. And if I was going to say that if we have to cut something, the first one I'd say is cut Seminole Lane out of it. Because other than, you said the Carpenter home, it's...
I agree with you.
It doesn't get a lot of other traffic. Like I said, I added that.
Where's that? How much money we talked on that?
Twenty-four thousand. But that was added at the request of the board in our conversations about the Carpenter home. I added that. That wasn't part of the plan, but that would be the one that I would recommend pulling in. But it's a twenty-four thousand dollars, a pretty small number.
Well, could that drop the asphalt to one hundred instead of one hundred and thirty?
No, we drop it to, what did I say? Four, it was four thirty. We drop it to four oh six.
I think we just need to take, I wouldn't worry about it now, Joe. I think we just need to take a look at what the plan is and where we are in the schedule. Anybody else? Ready for wastewater?
Yes.
Did we miss anything? Oh, bridges, I'm sorry. Yeah, bridges. We got to deal with bridges. We got some monuments coming to covered bridges. So are we including anything in here, seriously, with regard to the guards that?
No, that would be CIP stuff.
Okay, is that being discussed with them to?
Yeah, but we're waiting, as you know, we're waiting to hear back on final numbers. But you're looking, fifty thousand dollars per bridge for those warning lights. Forty thousand for the equipment and I'm estimating, can't get a contractor to get back to me on the installation of it.
And if we went with the steel?
Working on that number.
Do you anticipate it would be significantly lower or about the same?
I would guess half, but some bridges, like the bridge down here, you simply, you can't do it. Shouldn't say can't. It would be some serious challenges on the Thompson Bridge to put those metal barriers up. Some of the other ones, not so much.
And that's the one, we have some of the most challenges.
Yeah. And the one thing, you'll hear I caution the board, the town up in Vermont said they didn't have a lot of luck with the flashing lights. I don't know what type of system they had, but they were basically trying, they exhausted all measures and went with the metal barriers because of that.
So they did the lights first and then they went to the metal barriers?
Yeah, I can send you the email from the town administrator that gave you that.
It'd be tough, again, as we talked with regard to the mill, because they've got a loading dock that's right there.
You'd have to make it so that it was quickly, the top was quickly removed so they could get in there. Yeah, and who knows if there's even a plan to use that loading dock. It's not the easiest to get into. I'm sure when it was used, that curb and that sidewalk probably wasn't there. That's all relatively new.
Can you imagine putting that eighteen-wheeler down there?
Yeah, pretty tough.
Yeah, some skilled drivers. So does this include any of the other security, the cameras in the bridges?
No, I don't know where my family had that.
Are we doing that with CIP? Because we were anticipating the cameras going in in twenty-six.
That's the first I've heard of that. It was taught to you. You had to be working on the bridge barriers and... But I didn't do anything with the cameras.
Okay. Well, maybe that'll be our new IT...
What's that?
Maybe that'll be our new IT team when they come in. Do you recall what the cost was for the cameras?
Mike Granley handled that cost. Yeah, so the stuff with the bridges is the maintenance stuff that we've been spending money on. We're still waiting to hear back. The alarm companies right now are working on starlight dialers and such. So there's going to be some changes to phone lines and some of that equipment before the end of the year.
Was that installation or did that include the equipment?
Yeah, because I was going to say four, but it sounds right.
Well, we do want a budget for those, so whether it goes through CIP or through the operating budget, we want those doing this in 2026.
Then we could add them, we could add them to the operating budget. I don't know if that necessarily needs to be CIP.
It would help your budget.
What you think about my position, you cut the roads out of there, it's less for me to do. But like I said, there's caution that it's not getting any better. It's just going to keep, those roads have to be done. It's an expensive thing. You can have any asphalt expert come in and tell you that you got to plan on doing something about every ten years or you get to the point where you need to be doing complete reconstructions.
Or we go to the grader and grade up the old gravel roads.
All right. So what drove the activity this year that's not going to be in place next year? The fifteen thousand that was expended this year, what drove that number?
Fifteen thousand from...
Just in the bridges?
A lot of it's bridge, people getting the bridge. When Joe is invoicing the responsible parties' insurance or them directly, because we are getting money back, we're posting the expense to the operating budget and money we get from our insurance companies is going to the DBW's management. Anything that's going through our insurance claims is posted outside the operating budget.
Okay, so what would change that would prompt us to reduce that line item? You know, that category from fifteen thousand. We budgeted nine, we spent fifteen, and we're budgeting for seven next year, so.
So like Teresa was saying, prior to the year before, the two years before, we had a lot of time where the bridges were getting hit and we didn't have insurance to go after. We've been pretty successful lately in identifying the drivers and doing insurance claims. And then with the movement of the cameras and potentially bridge guards or bridge signs, that would be the anticipation. A lot of the other stuff is getting covered under CIP, the wood decking and such.
Okay, so part of the reason for dropping is the anticipation of the barriers and the cameras?
Yeah, and we have had a couple of pretty good years with insurance claims and all the people responsible.
And that's, we're going after more insurance claims, more, and we're watching, right? And I think we've talked about this enough in past meetings that we're making people alert of this more. So you could be right.
Telephone or the star legs really should be added under this budget too, because I just noticed like the bridge alarms. That's budgeted for five thousand, but that doesn't...
Yeah, the alarm got dropped down to zero because of the discussions we've had with the board about those alarms.
We're not having them.
Yeah. That's the other big one.
Maybe we should add a line for the internet, like what we're paying for internet on the, for the cameras. Like break that out one, which we think is a good idea.
It's in the IT budget now, but...
Well, you said a lot. Are we talking about a lot of money?
It's like sixty bucks a month for each bridge just for, on the phone though, for sixty-five or something.
It's about eight hundred a month.
It's all the phone lines and all the alarm panels. That's going to decrease, but those are all in their own line item, right? And the cameras fall into the IT stuff. I don't know how Mike had that set up in the IT.
Okay, when we revisit in December, we'll know that answer. Street lighting?
Just went off of that with historical, historical numbers.
So is there, are there end-of-year bills that come in or?
Yes.
Are these like leases for some of these lights? What are they?
Repairs and then bills for the electricity for them.
Do we own them all or do we lease any of them?
We pay for them.
Nothing on the dams?
No.
You got a ways away for Swansea Dam, right? We're looking at two years at least, right?
Yeah, the engineering services are coming out of CIP. They'll get working on that. And we don't know what the cost is going to be until what they find in the high grill studies. The first portion of it, they're going to determine how much more engineering they need to do. So it's, but you're right, you're probably looking at two years before the work is done.
Right. Well, if I could put a plug in for town meeting, your budget is one I would like to have a town meeting because there's a lot of logic in what you're doing.
Yeah, and then like, we get it from people, like people up on Marcy Hill already have a mutiny about the road up there, how bad it is. And it's like, it's millions of dollars to do these roads. We can't afford to do them all at once. You know, like I said, trying to do the plan they developed, which I support, was based on the condition of the road. We are not repaving roads that are in good shape. Like go drive down Prospects Re, right out here on the left. That's supposed to be paved this year. Go drive down that and tell me if you think that can wait much longer. You can barely, you can barely plow with a plow truck. And not only is it the damage of the asphalt being tore up, the wear and tear, we have really good plow equipment, but it beats the snot out of the plow trucks trying to plow roads like Sugar Hill. Go drive up Christian Hill right here, and it's bad, really bad. So it's not like we're out here paving roads that are in good shape.
Well, in addition, you've had some pretty high-profile projects that people can see, just in general.
Yeah, by us handing this to people, I have a town meeting, and you saying this, you know, you look at that a little differently, right? Than us saying, "This is the number and no explanation."
Especially if you live on one of those bad roads.
Especially if you live on one of them bad roads.
Or any other road and realize you might not get paved when you need to be paved.
It's a tough spot, man, with this.
Oh, yeah.
Is it?
We're paying for a hundred and twenty-three street lights.
We went through that, what, seven or eight years ago? Thanks, Teresa. Wastewater?
Wastewater's in pretty good shape. As you know, we've gone away from contracted services and we hired a full-time operator. We're also using the DBW foreman who's trained in both. And then Josh and Nick from the recycling center are currently training. So with the salaries from the employees, we're still below what we were paying in contracted services. Everything else is accounted in there. What we're required to pay keen for our services to the North Swansea Water, North Swansea Sewer System. One of the big things that's kind of up in the air right now is electricity, because as you know, the solar array is up and running. But there is going to be a loan payment coming for that that we need to pay. And we got to wait and see how much this, it's my understanding, the solar array is supposed to power the wastewater plant completely. But we're not there yet. But there is going to be, Lori and I need to do some work and find out exactly what this loan number is going to be. We talked with Michael about that earlier today. We need to get more information on that.
When you say we're not up to it, is because we know what it takes and it's not making that much right now?
No, it just got online. So I'm hearing what it's supposed to do and we need to see what it's going to do.
That's what the intentions I thought was going to happen. We were going to be, that's going to handle the whole waste water.
Yeah, I wasn't involved with the planning of it, but it's my understanding that it was supposed to cover all of it, which is pretty substantial. But there's going to be a loan payment to pay off a portion of that. So that needs to be accounted for.
We have no idea what the loan payment is.
I'm going to reach out to somebody at DES and see if we can get the loan payment scheduled.
We've added a vehicle, one of the old police cruisers that... We've added a vehicle, one of the old police cruisers that had to get added into it. It's going to get some repairs done to it shortly, but that should be up and online, uh, hopefully by the end of the month, sooner. Then you'll see some increases in sewer main cleaning, I can find the number. That's dictated by the wastewater pla, plan, the EPA's permit, we have to clean those sewer mains. That can, that will fluctuate, but right now, basically, everything needs to be cleaned, cleaned with a jet truck, that same vacuum truck that comes around and does catch baiting cleaning. I actually have him scheduled to get a height start on it, he's coming in for a week this year, uh, but that is mandated by, by the EPA, we have to jet those sewer mains out.
How often?
Uh, it's a, I think it has to be a third of the system each year, but we haven't done any in a long time, anything substantial in a long time, so, uh, between this year and next year, we're hoping to get everything done once, and then we'll get on a regular schedule. With this permit from the EPA, we'll see what happens with the next one.
So they go down a main, they do a section, then next year we go down another main and do a section?
Yeah.
And all it does is strip the pipes, clean it, and so nothing build up?
Yeah, and if you have any issues of concern, you're running.
They let you know, they give you a report at the end.
So Teresa, what's the FICA adjustment? I understand that, but why is it so significant?
There's a significant increase in payroll. Instead of having contact with services where we're only paying a portion of your office staff and the weekend coverage, now you're paying for two full-time employees, a portion of, plus your office staff and your weekend coverage, so all that together.
And that comes up to eighty thousand? 'Cause that.
On the best side, and then you have the worst side, which is also a big gap.
'Cause that kind of wipes out the whole contract idea.
Sure does.
If you, if you add that with, with salaries.
That seems off a lot, that seems.
That in the, uh, increase in.
What is our total number then, if it's gonna increase eighty? I mean, jeez.
I, I'd like to see how that could be broken out, but.
Right.
Because if, if we've got ninety-four in, in payroll, it just, the, the eighty thousand of FICA seems.
Yeah, this, it just doesn't seem realistic.
Yeah.
It's three quarters of what the salary is.
Yep. Well, let's hope it was a.
Let's hope it's wrong.
Yeah, let's hope it's a typo.
I didn't catch that duck does his heart.
'Cause I know when I, when I do it, it sounds like that, but.
Any other drivers, Joe?
No, like I said, most of it's just carryover, and what we've historically paid, it's, like I said, the big thing from the maintenance standpoint is the cleaning. The other major stuff would be CIP, like, we just, just finished the probes of the lagoon to see when it needs to be dredged, which is a pretty substantial CIP project, but we still have a couple of years before we do that. Who knows with the planning study that's going on, what direction we go, and that may not have to be done.
What are the supplies, Joe, is that chemicals?
Uh, no, there's testing, uh, I shouldn't say no, let me see that for a minute. Some of the chemicals fall under testing, uh, but there are all kinds of supplies down there from, like, recently, uh, the new operator's found a bunch of deficiencies, uh, he's been changing bearings, he just recently had to change a motor out on one of the pumps up in, uh, for fourteen hundred dollars up in, in North Swansea. But there are all kinds of supplies, whether it be testing tubes for the samples they take, lavatory equipment, uh, it's all, it's all stuff in the, in the, in the testing they have to do each week.
So you still think we got a lot more to buy then, too?
Yeah, there, there's a lot of things pointed out to me that need to be.
Yeah.
Just, just with having a, a full-time operator on board, a lot of experiences pointed out, a lot of deficiencies that need to be corrected there.
Can't wait for that study to get done.
What is that gonna be, and do you know?
I'm trying to.
No, that's, that's water, this is wastewater.
Sometime.
They're behind, they're behind schedule a little bit, it was supposed to be done in October, it was looking more like January.
I knew it's close, 'cause I thought Michael said.
But they're running into problems with the pilot program.
It's, it's gonna be interesting, huh? Millions. You've got that to help us out, Billy.
So I increased the maintenance of the building, you'll see there, the, the building where the discharge takes place into the river is falling, falling apart, uh, but I was told once again.
I thought we fixed that, the roof, no?
No, no, we did all the bomb stations.
Ah.
The affluent building out there is.
That's the one with just the roof and the cement and the opening, right?
Yeah.
It's like a pavilion-type roof?
And the same thing, engineers told them to hold off, don't do that yet, let's finish this planning study first, but.
Yeah, you didn't want to send the money, 'cause we didn't know what the future is. So what are you thinking, we need to just put one on?
No, we'll do some work to it, um, once I get a green light, yeah.
Maybe we can take that one off and put it on the rec, um, the baseball field.
Hey, the hell, Joe?
No, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward there, it'll be interesting to see about the FICA, but everything else is, is in there.
Mark? Jim?
I'm good.
Lori? Thank you, Joe, I think you have some work to do. Huh? Well, that's helpful.
Yeah, so too, it was an extra.
That's, that's.
What's that change for percentage, should you draw on wastewater, right?
Yeah.
That was an extra digit in there?
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Joe, huh?
Madam Town Clerk, how are we doing?
Mr. Bill, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Hi Heather.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm great, yourself?
Good to see you.
You as well. Mark, yeah?
All right, let's see where Heather's at here. Janitors, supplies, where are we, Joe? This one here?
Hopefully this will be a little easier for you.
Looks it.
That's Town Hall.
Where are we? This one? Janitors, salary. You good, Joe, on that?
What's that?
Holy cow.
What?
Twenty-two percent increase.
Hey, you're, you're the one that wants all this stuff done in the facilities, where do you think the money comes from? I'll remember that when you ask me about doing this stuff.
Well, that's the back staircase.
Where is it all, but I don't even see it.
That back staircase was dangerous.
Yeah, well, just like the front was before we did that, the, the buildings are not in poor condition.
But we're suffering injuries.
Buildings are not in good condition, but we wanna fix all these things. Just like Town Hall, we've done a ton with Town Hall, and then everybody's like, where's this money coming from?
Well, that, that staircase, we're lucky nobody fell through, seriously.
And the only reason why it's getting done is Lori was able to come up with money from, um, emergency management, there was no money in the Town Hall budget for that.
Joint loss.
Joint loss, joint loss. But I can tell you right away, uh, with the buildings, with the increase, which wasn't budgeted for, I don't know, the way it operated before, Michael, tell me what he had money for, and I did it, but this building and the Carpenter home need to have the fire suppression units tested and inspected every year, and you can count on a valve or something being defective needing to be replaced, so you're anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars there, you have to do that by law with the fire suppression. The alarm systems all need to be done, uh, and then the maintenance to the heating and the other stuff. So.
Oh, boy.
We could save money, we can go back to the way it was before and not fix that, but.
Yeah, the twenty-two percent sounds like a lot, but it's only seven thousand dollars, right? Yeah, let's put it in, let's put apples with apples here.
Thank you, Joe, do you have any questions?
Ain't that bad, Joe.
What's that? Oh, yeah, they're all, they're all built?
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
It, it is just teasing you.
I know, I'm just, I tell you, like, it's pulling, since I've taken over the facilities, we went from not doing anything, like I said, the board being a driving force about wanting to do this stuff, it costs money.
Well, we're just trying to maintain what we got, so it don't fall apart.
Oh, yeah.
We gotta hold it up, Joe. We gotta maintain it.
I was shocked when I saw that staircase.
Oh, it's been like that for a while?
No, I know, but it, the back one. We're lucky somebody didn't fall through.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really?
The rot was.
It was worse all the time? Cat, uh, Katrina.
No, this was, it was PMI, somebody.
Oh, you had, you had a handicap ramp out back there.
Oh, yeah.
That once I took over the facilities, that, it was, you would've been a bit better off not coming in the building and going up.
Yeah, you needed a four-wheeler to get up there.
And gloves.
And gloves.
Spend some time around the Carpenter home, you'll, you'll, you'll see much more needs than that.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Back to Madam Town Clerk, how are we doing?
I'm great.
All right, let's, I know where Heather's she is. Joe, see you later, bye. Clerk, this looks like her right here. You're right. I think this is it, Billy. Big twelve percent increase.
Oh, God.
All right, how about it?
So you wanna start right at the top, minus the salaries? So, the software and supplies. Those are pretty standard, those are annual fees. G works as our operating system for the motor vehicles. The blue, the blue book is, um, the M S R P prices that get downloaded into our motor vehicle system. And then my hopes for the interware O T C and the O T states, uh, O T C stands for over-the-counter terminal. Um, I'm hoping to get credit cards.
Yeah.
Um, in-house for next year.
Great.
Um, so if that's the case, if we were to go to new equipment, that's that five hundred dollars is the purchase of, um, a terminal to be able to do that. And with that comes that annual charge of sixty dollars a year.
And we're able to offset that with, with fees to use credit card?
Yeah, the percent, it's so, I mean, it's, it depends, I guess, on how many people use it, but I can tell you, on an average day, we probably have a half a dozen, if not a dozen, people ask, even with the sign, although you don't take debit or credit cards, um, so they go up to the store and use the ATM. Why don't we have an ATM at Town Hall?
There you go, ten percent fee to pull, pull money out, that would work.
Well, I asked Lori, because I've looked into them.
Yep.
And I, you know, we send, I don't know if, you know, only being here almost five years, I don't know if it's ever been looked into, but, um, looking into them on my own.
What, putting an ATM in?
In Town Hall, 'cause we send everyone to the mobile station right up the road, and they come back with cash, which is fine, but I feel like it's money, even, it's a revenue source, and it may not be, you know, a, a lot, I'm not quite sure what the percentage would be, but when someone goes up the road and has to use the ATM three times to get out the amount of money, 'cause you can only get two hundred dollars at a time.
The biggest purchase of that is just buying the machine, and it, they're not that bad, 'cause I looked into them to put one in my restaurant in the doorway, but I was more afraid of it just because of breaking in aspects, people seeing that and smashing through my front door and trying to drag it out with a pickup truck or something. So I didn't do it, but she's right, there is profit there, but you have to have someone maintain it, reload it, and do all that stuff, so somebody would have to go to the bank and get the money, bring it back, fill it.
And, and that'd be currently us that are authorized to do our deposits now.
Yeah, but we don't have a credit card, people can't pay with credit cards at that.
Not currently, no, and, and people.
And we can put a three percent fee on that for credit cards of that.
Probably higher, um, than that, there are charges at interware, charges themselves, um, that even when they do them online now, and we mail them out, there's a, a service fee. Um, it's a flat rate of ninety-five cents if you use a debit card.
Right.
So, I mean, the chance of people not going to get cash up the road might drop a little bit, but I still think we're gonna have people that aren't going to wanna pay those service fees for a credit card and are gonna rather take the three minutes to go up the street and get cash. Just like, you know, that's neither here nor there, the ATM thing, but, um, I would like to get credit cards in-house.
Okay.
And we, we narrowed down that taxes can't be done, um, even if, so I looked into, last year's budget had Avatar on it, which is the tax operating system, and we looked at Town, the Town Clerk side also getting the same software so we could have credit cards in-house, and it balanced altogether on the same operating system. However, with the research in that, we found out that taxes can't even be accepted over the counter through the tax system now, it's only credit cards, it's only online. And it's cheaper with the current system that we're with to do it than it is with Avatar.
Okay.
So that's my software and supplies, um, the training, it's our annual, um, clerk's training, as well as the spring workshop, and then our regular, um, the dues that we pay yearly, uh, which is just twenty dollars. Motor vehicle office supplies, I mean, that's our standard, anywhere from our toner cartridges to pens.
We have three elections next year, don't we?
We do. That's, elections is a separate supply item.
I was just looking at the salaries for, for elections.
The, I don't have control over that, unfortunately.
Who, who does?
'Cause I realize I'm like four hundred and twenty-four percent over budget this year, and it kills me.
Well, we do have to budget for, this year we had one, next year we have three.
So I don't, so I don't know what the ballot clerks make per hour, I don't know how many volunteer, I don't know how many get paid, I don't know how many we're gonna have, because that's something that Bruce, um, handles.
Well, I think if we, if we look at.
I would love to.
If we look at twenty-four, we spent six thousand, and, yeah, that was the budget, we spent nine thousand, and that was for four elections, so if we figured twenty-five hundred, let's say, per election, unless we take, do we, do we have higher use, or higher payroll for, for the federal election as opposed to the primary, or?
I believe so.
We do, we have more people coming in for that, so we're probably gonna be somewhere around six thousand.
So you're on, on ballot, on the salary though, right?
Well, for that line item, salaries for elections, but, but salaries would.
I don't set that number, though.
Huh?
I don't set that number.
But salaries would, would, salaries wouldn't include the workers, 'cause those are, those aren't salaried, they're just stipend.
Right, but that's all of your election numbers, other than the, the town moderator and the moderator. That's the whole, the whole election.
Okay, I think you'd be better, so who sets, how do we determine it?
Town.
Oh, you got your certificate, so now you're leaving?
No, I was gonna see how to swear.
Oh, well, she'll do that, stick around for five minutes, she'll, she'll swear you in. Thanks, Mark.
Typically, we need to give you a best guess. If Heather said, it depends on how many people are working, how long they're there, what position they're in, if their assistant moderator of the election is a higher rated than without their moderator of the election, assistant moderator.
Ideally, it would be great prior to, well, even this, or our town election, to get together with our moderator, and Lori and I spoke about this, and come up with a, a better system of the whole ballot clerk.
Everything's like crammed into this section, where if they're like other towns, I've seen they break it out, there's supervisors of the checklist, they have their budget, and the supervisors of the checklist would account and do the math for the elections, and, you know, four elections times this much, and that way. So, and then the moderator would have their own, um, budget as well, and then obviously the town clerk has her, it's already. And then obviously the town moderator has her, it's already a labor agreement, so, yeah, I think it should be built on that.
So when I do my budget and enter my numbers into the BSNA system, I don't have, I don't have access to any salary information, it's not there for town clerk, deputy town clerk, or election workers. No, no, I, yeah, I know, but I just want, so, I was, you know, I didn't like to see that percentage the way, you know. Because overall, it's my budget, but I don't have control over it, which is a little bit...
Why don't we bump that number to six thousand as a placeholder? And why don't we schedule a meeting with the board and all the interested parties, so we can discuss breaking it out the way Lori just, and Teresa just suggested? Can you coordinate that with Lori?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, anything to make the election process easier would be great.
So looking at election supplies, it's interesting that in twenty-five, this year, we had one election. We budgeted four thousand, but we spent six. But in twenty-twenty-four, we had four elections, we budgeted twenty, and we spent just under nine.
So the budget was originally, because we got a grant that we did not anticipate of seven thousand dollars for the voting machines from the state. That did not come until after that budget number was added.
So that'll offset some of the cost?
Yes, and this year, I don't... So I... I'd have to go back and look at why we're over on that. Other than, some of it I know is the, so this is our first year using Voting Works and Democracy Live, which printed our town ballots. And so those were a little bit more expensive than anticipated. They were more than we normally pay for ballots. And part of that is because they took the higher numbers of the school and our ballot counts. Lillian got more regular ballots than she needed, we got more absentee ballots than we needed. When we went to the show, the conference this year, there's lots that's changing with that. Again, that was their, this was their first year working with the towns and cities on producing ballots, so a lot of that would've been different for twenty-six.
Do you have budgeted in here for another machine?
Yep, so that top one, that VScan, VXan for Voting Works, that's six thousand dollars is the voting machine.
And is there grant money available, or anything coming from the state?
No, because we already, they do one, one grant per town.
Okay.
I did ask.
Is that something we can share with the school, school district?
The money for the machine?
Yeah, maybe they pay some.
Well, so I, I don't know, because currently, you know, so they pay the annual cost of one of the machines, because they're designated one of the machines for town election. If we were gonna use, I guess it depends on how we wanna run this election, if we're gonna, if school's gonna continue, you know, this year was a little bit different because of our ballot situation. But if school's gonna use one machine, I don't know if we can ask them to pay any annual charge on a machine that they're not going to be utilizing, is my, is my thought.
Well, they would be utilizing.
So right now, we have two ballot machines, and on town elections, like the school ballots in a typical election would go in one ballot machine, and the town would go in another, so that at the end of the night, we would not be separating the ballots out of the back of the machines. So the school historically has paid the annual fee of, to maintain one of those machines. So with us purchasing a third, if two of them are gonna be used for town ballots submission, and one's gonna be used for school, designated for school...
It's not benefiting them in any manner, right, that's what you're saying.
Right.
And we're, and we're not charging them.
But we didn't, so, we didn't do it that way.
Well, we didn't this lot, we didn't this year.
Right.
She's saying if we do it next year.
But we have, I mean, that's how it's, in previous years, but because we ran into that problem with the lines this year.
With the new software, we weren't, we didn't have to separate them. Right, in other words, we, people just, they put all their ballots in one of the machines.
Right, but they still dropped into the back, and we had to split the white and the yellows.
I don't disagree with that, but in the past, one machine was school, one machine was town. Now, both machines take, take...
They tal, they, yes, I mean, they're tallies.
Right, so, so if we get a third machine, they'd be paying for one and a half, basically.
Not if we did it head this way, and we use two for this and one for them.
But we don't...
If we did it like you said, you make sense, use them all three, put anything in, and we just, then they pay for one and a half, but we pay.
Right, but that's what we did, remember when we brought in a dummy, the dummy box, and?
Yep.
If we'd have done it otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to.
So I thought that, you know, I hope, the help, I, the hopes is with the third machine, we won't be where we were this year, though, as well as...
Well, Lori came up with a good solution, too, which is to, to redraft our warrant articles, so that we don't have crosshairs in there, which will drop a page.
A software update that will happen to our two tabulators that we have now. And then the new one that we're going to purchase is a different version than the ones we have now. So the speed in which they take a ballot now is five to six seconds, that's going to be reduced on the new upgrade or on the new machine to two to three seconds. And then there's also, from what I understand, when we designed the town ballots for next year, there will be a compact option as far as size, whether we choose it or not, but one of the things that was, they, was brought up to them several times, was the amount of space that was left in between the warrant articles, just the blank space. So, hopefully our ballot won't...
We won't have eleven pages?
Yeah. But...
Okay. All right, so is that a CIP, or is this a line item?
The damage.
The ballot machine.
It's all under, yeah, election, so I broke it out, just so you guys could see the charges, but it all, the twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty all falls under election supplies.
I have a suggestion. I would probably provide for a new machine under new equipment.
Even...
It will stand out better if they're trying to define something instead of looking through.
So can we make an account for election new equipment, so it's not, is that possible, Teresa? Without creating too much, instead of just grouping it with the other new equipment?
Anything else, Heather?
Um, no, I mean, continue a restoration of records, that's, you know, the sixty-three hundred.
Yep.
Which is going to be, I'm gonna see a record of taxes. And then the other books, the version nine, version ten are town invoices, are the next two books after that. And those are also ones that the bindings have mold on them, so they really need to be taken care of, and...
Yep.
So we're still plugging away at that, we'll do...
We're glad you're doing it.
Still do a couple every year.
Yep.
As budget allows, so...
Nice.
The new equipment we talked about for the over-the-counter software, dog taxes is a normal thing. Dog postage, we were over on that, that was the other one I was over budget on this year. Did not anticipate sending as many certified civil forfeitures out as we did at ten dollars and something cents a letter. There's over a hundred of them that went out, so...
Yep, that allowed up.
That allowed up, yep.
All right. If you could take a look and see what you can do to scale that back a little bit?
Absolutely.
Or just identify the, the highlights?
Yeah.
We definitely need, we definitely need a third machine, whether, whether it happens this year or in twenty-twenty-eight.
Yeah, and so what the state is doing for all the towns and cities for the upcoming election year is the All-for-One booth, which is the handicap accessible booth. So we don't, it's great that we don't have to cover those, they're gonna, these are used for state and federal elections as well.
Good. Jim, Mark?
I'm great.
Lori? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Very much, have a great night.
You, too. What's next there, Madam Town Administrator? I think you should wait and see what you get. We can, we can do this in December. All right? Anything else? Gentlemen, I will give you a second shot at public input. Just, just need to identify yourself for the minute taker. What's that? Okay.
Good evening, Michael O'Connor, I live at two oh one Westport Village Road here in Swansea. Anything else?
No, just, welcome.
I'm here just to bring to the board a concern. It has to do with California Street from Route Ten to the bridge. I'm very concerned with the width of the road, and I know you can't do anything about the width of the road, because there's curbs on both sides of it. But, you know, six months ago, there was a sidewalk on the eastbound lane, and when you came up over that crest, and someone was coming westbound, you had three feet of sidewalk that gave you a little bit of grace that you could move into. Now there's no grace, that road's twenty feet wide. I have a eight-foot, eight-and-a-half-foot wide Silverado. Now, I only come down this road because I love driving through covered bridges, I have no business on that road. I love driving through, like, the covered bridges here in Swansea. But there are a lot of people that come down through that road that don't know it. And they come up over the middle of that lane, and I have been a victim of that many, many times. Where either, if they're coming eastbound, they've moved onto the sidewalk, or I've gone onto the sidewalk. My only request, my only thought, and I have talked to Mr. DeRusso, I've emailed him, I've had conversations with him. I had another one with him tonight, because people have called me, because I, I brought this up in social places, and people have called me and said, Mike, there's, there's lines down the middle of California Street now. And I'm like, but they're also grading, or they're doing the scarifying, and I'm assuming they're gonna pave sooner or later. And I imagine that's a paving mark that's kind of broken apart.
The traffic code's gonna go on next week.
Right, so I imagine there's a, down the middle of the road, they would put a, so, and I just talked to Mr. DeRusso tonight. There is no plan to put any marking, because the engineer said the road's too mo, too narrow already to put a marking down the middle of the road. I just think it's a terrible safety hazard somewhere, and again, it's great to have the curbs, you know, using granite, New Hampshire granite, I hope. But if there was a mark in just a solid white line right down the middle of that road, people would know where they had to be. Be on your side of the road, and again, even with my Silverado, it's not big, it's an average-sized truck, it's technically eighty-seven inches across with mirrors. I still have a foot on one side and a foot on the other side to stay on my lane. And if someone does that, then you get two feet in the middle, and people are safe. But, you know, without a marking, they're gonna come up over that middle of that road, and that's it.
When, when you brought that up to the DPW director with regard to the white line, what was, I, I didn't quite catch what you were talking about.
Sure, um, I, I emailed him last week, he talked to the engineers, and his response was, the engineers say there's not, the road's not wide enough to put a lane down, a line down the middle of it. I'm a simple person, that doesn't make sense to me, but, because if there's not a, if it's not wide enough to put a line down the middle, how do you expect cars going east-west at the same time? Now, it's, it's a, it's a zigzag through it now, only because of the, the manholes and stuff like that, you gotta be really careful. Or you're gonna blow a tire or something like that, but when that thing gets paved, well, first we know what happens when the road gets paved, turns into a little bit of a speedway. And people are gonna come up over that crest, I just hope they're on the right side of the road. Thank you.
We appreciate you bringing it up, we'll, we'll take it up with him.
Yeah, and he, he said that you're gonna ask me to talk to him, and I said, I'm, I'm all in favor of talking to you more and more and more every time I get a chance to.
He's doing a great job for the town. Thank you, Mike. Yes, sir. Did you, did you come just for the entertainment, or did you wanna have something to say?
What's that?
I was curious if you came for the entertainment, or if you had something you wanted to bring to our, our attention.
Jimmy?
Nice to see you.
Listen, I'm Anthony Bruno, I live at eighteen Merrow Street.
Have a seat, Anthony.
And, uh... It's been twenty-five months since I brought this problem to the attention of the Swansea Police Department and the Select Board. And the problem is the recklessness and the safety and quality of life on Railroad Street. It has gotten worse. And I'm not alone anymore, I'm here to give this to you, because everybody on the street is tired of it. We fear for our safety and our quality of life. It is, what is going on, why it's going on, I don't know. But what is going on is that there is willing and wanton acceleration coming off that Main Street intersection with Main Street, Christian Hill, and Railroad Street. And by the time they hit Pine Street and Eaton Road intersection, they are well close, if not going fifty miles an hour. And it's pleasure vehicles and commercial vehicles. The commercial vehicles are more and more each, each season. The ones that haul the gravel and, and pavement for whatever projects are going on across town are speeding. I know Mr. Bell doesn't own the septic system anymore, but, but his, that, the, one of the Bell drivers, one of the drivers that drive the septic truck is horrible, he's horrible. He is well above forty-five, fifty, going through there in that huge truck, okay? Also, the, the ones in the, the commercial dump trucks, but, uh, for some reason, there's one police officer that feels he had to make the remark, well, it's your neighbors, and there's no way. I don't know why he said that, but this is a true, real problem, and it's gotta be addressed. I know the Swansea...
What do you think Tony causes, what, why, in the past years, right, you see it getting worse and worse? What do you think is the reason behind it, do you have any thoughts?
Don't know.
Don't know?
Don't know.
I mean, is it because we made the road nicer, and, and, because we did put the sidewalk in, and we made the road nicer, and does it look more appealing to go faster?
The sidewalk's not gonna, not gonna resolve reckless try.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to figure out what's causing these people...
I think there's been, it's been going on with so long that there, and there's been a common knowledge, maybe above the, amongst the offenders, there's no consequence for it. I mean, there's a police officer that lives right at, near that Pine Street Eaton Road intersection, he can tell you what's going on in front of his house, never mind what's going on in front of my house. I've had people coming along from Eaton Road...
Thank you, Teresa.
Coming in front of my house, and another car behind them passed them on that double solid line to only have to maybe curtsy at the stop sign, at the four-way, can you imagine, imagine that? It's a true, real problem. And I am not alone now complaining, it's twenty-five months later, and every household on that street has signed off, wants something to done on, be done about this. And it doesn't matter why I think, what I think is going on or causing it, but for some reason, coming off that intersection, their drivers are blind to the stop signs, so blind that it, during the winter, they've gone through trainer's fence twice, because they couldn't make the corner, because they didn't stop.
Coming from Main Street?
Coming off Main Street. And there's some kind of invitation, I have no idea what it is. And there's some kind of invitation, I have no idea what it is. But when they come off that intersection, coming down Railroad Street, going towards Eaton Road, by the time they've just cleared in front of Trainer's House, they are getting on it and they're going 40 to 45 by the time they hit my daughter's house. And that, it's, it's unacceptable, unacceptable. And this, believe me, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't true. And I'm not the old man that sits on this porch, slow down, slow down. Everybody on that street is sick of it.
What is the speed limit?
Thirty.
Thirty. Thirty all the way.
Can I suggest that we at least should start with, we move that sign that we have over there?
The sign document for the board.
Yep.
And just a picture of the car that flipped over last May, the year, May 2024, that crashed on the rocks, that line passes its property.
So Jim was, as you were talking, was making a suggestion. You, you've probably seen the movable sign that we have that identifies people's speed. But he's, you want to just...
Well, here's the thing.
Yeah.
I mean, let's start somewhere. Maybe I call the chief and we put that sign down there that flashes and tells you you're going too fast. I know I slow down when I see it, I don't care what anybody says. But let's see what that does to show people who are concerned with that.
Well, I have talked with, I've given the same thing to...
Joe?
The chief, yep.
And what did the chief say?
Well, he was busy on the phone, but Sergeant Pakman took it. And Sergeant Pakman took, took that sign from Route 12 over there by the Salvation Army and brought it up and put it at the intersection of Pine Street and Eaton Road for traffic coming off Eaton Road.
No, we want to go the other way.
It's the other way.
And we need to put it where the stones are on the left, so when they come down, right?
You guys can put it under my tree where I posted it.
Can we do it there?
Because when...
Well, your spot would be better.
When Joe put up the speed limit sign, it took me eight months to get that speed limit sign reinstalled where it was because somebody had taken it out by going too fast, couldn't make the corner off Main Street. They took that out. But apparently it was in Mr. Trainer's way when he moved it along, so they moved it down to Eaton Road, the intersection of Pine Street and Eaton Road, but it's after the fact.
No, it needs to go where you said. It, it needs to go right where you said and then I, you're gonna see, I think we're gonna see some changes, at least for now, until we figure something out.
Well, I hope so, because that picture's a clear vision.
No, I agree.
Of what's coming.
I agree.
Like what's coming. I, I don't want, I, it just scares me that it might end up in, that somebody really getting hurt. There's four little kids across the street. And, you know, you know as well as I do, you take your eyes off the kids for a split second and where are they? And those kids are always in the front yard, always. But, you know, I know there's mailboxes that have rear doors on them, but why should I?
What number is your, what number is your house where that tree is?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
And the tree is right where the speed limit sign is?
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, you know where that is?
Yeah. It's, it, it is really a, a true and real problem and everybody on the street is sick. They would need, they, they say as long as you handle it, we'll be happy, but we are sick of it. And it's, it's not, where it's like every other day, every, that, it is from seven in the morning till 9:30 in the morning and 2:30 to 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And it's, uh, that's when it's at the worst. Then, so I don't know what can be done. It's not, I have no experience in what can be done. But I do know that the police department is extremely short of help. And I'm wondering if there's any help available through the state.
They're, they're in the same boat. They're in the same situation.
So I, you know, I don't know if the answer is, but I do know...
Well, we can, we can certainly take the approach...
The consequences are coming.
We can take the approach that Jim talked about.
I'll go see Joe and we'll talk about it and we'll see where we can go there, all right?
But Sergeant Pakman said he was gonna put the sign back somewhere. I don't know, I said...
Well, I'll talk to Joe and make sure he put it in the right spot this time.
Then I talked to the chief and he's, and I said, you can put it right at, right around, chain it to my tree where I posted my own speed limit signs. But somebody's gonna get hurt.
Absolutely.
And we're trying to encourage traffic on the rail tracks.
That crash, that crash, there's an old guy, I think his last name's Lanning, and he walks his little trailer. That crash happened, he had just cleared those stones, he'd walked in. And it was before the sidewalk was put in. He was just almost to the Porta White entrance when that car hit those rocks. So it's coming. Why should he be fearful just going out for a stroll? I mean, now it's, the sidewalks are beautiful, thank you very much, but it doesn't resolve the traffic problem. At least it gets the people off the side of the street anyways, so it keeps going on.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Anthony.
Tony, thank you.
But it's been, it's been two years now since the first one.
Well, we'll start with the sign, see what we can do from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Not for nothing, both of these arguments, you know, we're not traffic, we don't know what we can do. There ain't so much we can do.
It's, yeah, it's just more, we'll read it. It's primarily notification of a concern. All right. So general government building and expenses, that's what we're putting off until next, next week? Or until you...
No, we did that, we did that.
I'm sorry, the, I, I meant the assessing and IT, we're putting that off.
Yeah.
Special event permits?
Um, I have it here. So I, I have the policy and then the form. Just, I guess my point was that there's a form, here's the application that people fill out, and nowhere on the form does anyone sign off on it. So it, basically they fill it out. I don't know if it's being distributed to the department heads. And, and lunch, they would meet weekly and go over anything like this and sign off. The chief, both chiefs, and DPW if there's anything. And then it would go to the board for approval of it.
The ones that we've received have all had sign offs, so I don't know what your...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've seen...
Really?
Yeah.
Is there...
The police chief and...
Fire chief? That's not the standard form that we've, we've received. Okay, well...
So maybe it's wrong.
I don't know, but that's not the form that's been distributed when we signed off. Because that, that particular form that you're referring, not that one, but the one that Mark's referring to, does have room for comment by department heads.
Okay, so maybe this is just the wrong one, like the website?
Possibly.
That's all. You guys, you guys to talk about it, so...
We'll punt till next week so we can get the right form in your hands. Because there is a form that people fill out. All right? Any old business? Any update from our town administrator?
I think I have one. Oh, the county, our county portion, we got our ingress for that yesterday. And it's actually going down. So Swansea's portion for the county budget is $2,315,280, which was down about, I think, 6%, over 6% overall upstairs. So a decrease in that one. But that was kind of good news.
Well, the, the county administrator was very open about the, the fact that they've basically been level, level budgeting for the last six years. They've done a great job, the county and the, and the delegation.
It is a loss.
We should make sure we give Chris Coats and his team credit because that's pretty substantial to have all the, all the programs they have in place. And yet they're coming in level funding, or in this case with a 6% reduction. Lot different than what we saw over the last two hours.
That's scary.
All right, anything else?
You can see the bottom line when it's all together.
Anything else, madam?
Okay, I have the thing. You'll have this for the letter that we want sent to the state.
You've got that, it's all signed.
Yeah, you do want to talk about it.
I think we all know, is that for, for craft?
Yeah.
Craft, whatever.
Craft, craft, craft.
All right, any non-publics? We have one.
Do you want to discuss that first guy, what he, his complaint was at all? About the road, California road?
It makes a lot of sense.
The DPW Director did what he did, did what he could to get easements to, to widen the road. And he wasn't able to get any cooperation, so he did make a strong concerted effort to widen it.
Can't make that a one-way road.
It could end up being that way.
Because you got the other road, what, the, the, we could make it one way and no out.
That, that was one of the proposals.
Route 10 and... I don't know, that might be something we might want to look at, right?
Yep. That was discussed. Anything else? Under reputation?
Make a motion for one to non-public under reputation.
Second?
Yeah, what she said. Now we're...